Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna, so unnatural for me with the gavel, but I'm gonna officially, I'm gonna officially wield the gavel and get us started this evening. I'm Stephanie George. I've got the privilege of serving as the president for the Board of the Library. Also with me this evening is fellow colleagues on the Board is Eric Fong, representing Bainbridge Island. Eric Sizney, we've got two Eric's. Eric Sizney, representing South Kitsap. Marwan Cameron, also along with myself, representing Bremerton and Central Kitsap. Gina Steiner is not with us this evening because she has taken ill. Eric, do you want to start us with the mission statement, please, Eric Fong?
Sure, thank you. Where did it go? Inspiring our community to dream more, learn more, do more, and be more.
Thank you. Jason, would you like to take a moment and introduce the leadership team with us this evening?
Yes, good evening. Welcome in, everyone. And I have leadership team with me from left to my right. Tammy Jeffries, administrative and executive assistant. Dan Baird, deputy director and chief financial officer. And then Shannon Peter, deputy director of public services. And then we have Wendy Kyle, executive director of Kitsap Regional Library Foundation. And then Lacretia Robertson, who's a human resources director and director of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And finally, Mike Rose, director of information technology and facilities. Absent tonight is Jeannie Allen, who is our strategy director. And she is not with us tonight, so she's excused. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. And thank you all who are here this evening. Next on our agenda is really to talk about, are there any additions, changes, or notations to the agenda? And I know, Eric, you have a comment.
I do regarding agenda item 7.2. Just a point of clarification, I am no longer on the Strategic and Long Range Planning Committee.
Thank you. Public comment. It doesn't appear that we have public comment this evening, but we welcome public comment, so we look forward to that in the future. And that then leads me to the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted in one motion of the Board of Trustees with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired on any of the agenda items, items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request. Given that, are there any requests to remove something from the consent agenda? Okay? Otherwise, what we will be approving in the consent agenda are minutes from the special board meeting on January 24th, as well as the minutes for the regular board meeting on January 24th, payment of January 2023 bills, payroll and benefits, and blanket voucher bills, as well as the surplus library materials that are being withdrawn from the collection for January, which includes 3,537 items. That denotes what's on the consent agenda, and I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second, then.
Thank you. With the motion and a second, all in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we're moving to presentations, reports, and briefings, and we're going to start with members of the Board if somebody would like to talk about what they've done in the last month.
Sure, I'm happy to. I attended in mid-February the Community Strategy Session. Had a great discussion with several different leaders across the community, as well as leadership and staff. It was great to be there and be a part of all that. Additionally, attended the BPL monthly meeting, and we're excited to have Jason out in March to talk more about strategy and how we can work together between the BPL and the Kitsap Regional Library. So excited to have you out there.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just wanted to continue to acknowledge our staff, especially for the ML King Library downtown. As you know, the temperatures are frigid, and they're slated to be so for the next probably seven or eight days. And so the severe weather shelters have been open for quite a while. So we've gone through ice storms, and here we are. Unfortunately, the severe weather shelters are going to close March 31st. And so just want to, you know, put it on everyone's mind that we have quite a bit of population out here that needs support, and that way, the library just does a phenomenal job of kind of being that house of refuge for folks during the day.
Marwan, thank you. I also want to just note and comment to that is the role that you play in the community. I see you on Facebook, letting others know that and different things that are going on in the community, particularly for those who are most vulnerable. So thanks for that. Eric, do you want to share?
I also attended the Community Strategy Session. I think that was really great. Talked to the superintendent of South Kitsap Schools, and he has similar problems to we do as far as finance. And it's really a good session, so I appreciate that.
It was a great, it was a great session. Well-attended by both. I think there was a lot of community members there, but it was also nice to see a lot of frontline staff there as well from the library, which was helpful. I also went to that session, obviously, too. And then, I can't remember the timing of this, but we did also get to see the unveiling of the donor wall, and that was a, that was a fun event as well. So that concludes our board reports. Marwan, would you like to report on the Strategic and Long Range Planning Committee?
Sure, I'll give a quick summary here of our discussion of the summary for the strategic plan. We've been working on this, lots of different engagements since September. Not only the SWOT analysis, which is the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, but the diversity, equity, and inclusion recommendation summary, and then also the KCR Community Needs Assessment, which KRL had a really big part in planning that and executing that, so looking forward to that. And the next steps will be the retreat that will take place on March 16th to get going on the strategic plan.
Thank you. Any questions for Marwan? All right. Okay, that leads us to the financial report, Dan.
Thanks, Stephanie. Our first month is unremarkable. In terms of financials, we don't have a lot to report on, but I will say that revenues and expenditures are within projections. There are two large capital expenditures that occurred in January. One was planned, and that is the, I think, close to the final payment for the Seven Way McKinstry Project. That was about $228,000. And then number two, we received our final payment for the sale of the Silverdale undeveloped property. And that was about $140,000. That came in, and that's a pass-through. So it came into our books, and it went to the foundation as they were the original owner of that property. So that's why you're seeing $139,000 in expenditures with an offset of $139,000 in revenues. So it's just, it's just basically a pass-through to our system. So I'll be entertaining questions now? If anybody has any questions, or me on it?
Any questions for Dan? Dan, I had a question, but it's, you know, it's kind of looking at last year and this year, too, is that there are a couple of items that are noted on here this time that relate to security, and we're pacing out. Do you expect that pacing to kind of hold steady for the year?
For security services?
Yeah.
Most likely if we don't change our coverage plan. If we're not changing the plan with that, then that could change.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That now leads us to really our, not that the finances weren't a star report, Dan, but our feature report this evening will be from Wendy Kyle at the Foundation.
Thank you. It's great to see everybody. I'm excited to be here to do an annual report, sharing our results from 2022. So I'm going to start off by introducing the team. We have, for those who don't know, we're a team of 2.75, a team of three, 2.75 FTE. Let's clarify that. So myself, our assistant director, Carrie Driscoll, and then our foundation specialist, Alyssa Shaw, who joined us at the end of December. So she's our newest member of the team. Our focus in terms of fundraising, so to just kind of share with you, the model we're working under, our fundraising framework, if you will, is really to focus in three areas, to be relationship-driven, to share impact, and to build our donor base. So all of our efforts are kind of in one of those three pillars. And then, within those three pillars, we focus on acquisition, annual giving, mid-level giving, grants, major gifts, or major campaigns, and then planned giving and stewardship. The Foundation is also led by a Board of Directors who does do a strategic plan every year. So in 2020, actually really at the end of 2019, the Foundation Board put together a strategic plan that was taking us through this year of 2023. So I don't think that the Foundation has had an opportunity to share that with the trustees. So I thought that would be great framework to help the trustees understand kind of the goals that the Board has set out for us as an organization, so the Foundation Board. So those three goals identified when we went through that process in 2019 were around board recruitment, were around increasing the visibility of the Foundation within the community and within the library, and then finally, to build our relationship between the Foundation Board and the Library Board of Trustees, as well as the Friends of the Library. So those were the three areas of focus. And then, within each of those, there were some specific objectives that were outlined and strategies. So in terms of Board, of course, really kind of meeting our bylaws, our bylaws say that we have a minimum of 10. The Board has set a goal of like, we want to have at least 12, so that way, if there is people coming off that we're not in fear of not being within our bylaws, so we kind of have a little bit of a cushion. And then really focusing on the skills, experience, and diversity of the Boards. So we put together a matrix where we're first identifying, what are the skills that we're looking for in our Board in terms of, do we want to have legal background? Do we want to have accounting background? Do we want to have, so what are the experiences and skills that we look for the Board to bring? And then also, where are they located? Are we, do we have members from across all of Kitsap that really are representing all of our nine branches where we're serving community and living in those communities and representing those communities? And then, of course, in terms of diversity, backgrounds, that kind of thing. So we have a lot of work to do there, but that's how we began to put together, you know, here's who we're wanting to recruit, if you will. So our focus has been getting our numbers filled. So we've, each year through 2022, have been able to recruit new members. As you know, that's a lot of work. And it feels like it's just been all we've been working on. And so we do have in 2023, really, to continue that recruitment, really focusing on also identity demographics in terms of, you know, race, like gender, identity, all of those things, like are we, are we represented well in those areas? So that's how we're wanting to focus our efforts of recruitment in 2023. And then, goal number two, increasing the visibility of the Foundation within the county and within the library. So building that objective there is building that strong, faithful, dependable donor base that allows us to really continue to meet the ongoing needs of the library in terms of the annual major and planned giving goals that we have going forward. And then, the strategies there were around strengthening the fund development function, which is our annual giving, major giving, relationships with donors, and then strengthen and enhance the stewardship function, that's sharing the impact of the library, like reporting back, what is the library doing with the gifts that the community has given them? And then finally, to develop a recognizable brand for the Foundation that really allows the Foundation to then co-brand with the library those donor-funded programs, and that there begins, that they begin to see there is this Foundation, and it's doing, supporting these initiatives, programs, efforts, et cetera. So our, we have a lot of, this was the biggest one in terms of, there was a lot in that. So we've had a lot of progress over the last three years in fund development. We've been focusing on annual, on growing our base. So we've had great growth in our direct mail. We started doing acquisition, which we hadn't been doing before I started. So we are seeing great growth. We had, you know, a banner year in 2020 when we first kicked off, and so we're seeing that sort of, you know, kind of begin to balance out. So we continue to set that goal at 20%, and we'll see if that's a threshold we can continue to meet as we go into 2023. We didn't, of course, hit that in 2022 with a 9% increase, but still, that's great, that's great growth. So we're, we're not disappointed by that. In terms of fund development, again, where we had a focus on growing our 1,000-plus donors, we did the same thing again, where we had this amazing opportunity in 2021 for our Kitsap community to, with a gift of $1,000, be listed on the Silverdale donor wall to kind of close out that community portion of the campaign. And wow, they showed up. They wanted to be, they wanted to be a part of that. And so that was a great opportunity. And we had a 533% increase. So we definitely did not expect to see that again, but still really happy with the, with being able to renew, going from 18 to then 115, and then in 2022, still having 69. So a lot of renewal, which was really great. So again, we're pleased with the results there. And then stewardship, we developed a communication calendar to share impact reports through email. We started producing an annual report that gets mailed out to the donor community. So we're continuing to work through that calendar of communication, and we'll just keep focusing on that. And then finally, visibility and branding. With the support of our library marketing team, we have a Foundation brand, a logo. It's been very well-received, and we've been super happy with it, a beautiful website. A lot went into that visibility and branding. And so that was with tremendous support from our marketing team. So into 2023, our goals, we have a lot of goals as we, you know, every year, we have a lot of goals. So I'll just share what those are for 2023, and there's probably some that aren't on here, so. But one of the things that's been on the list for a while is to develop a broad case for support for the library, a case that really supports the Foundation, making asks that are unrestricted, that support the Library's long-term vision as well. So as the, as a library goes through its strategic planning process and really defines kind of those future goals long-term, that will help us begin to craft that case. So we've been looking forward to this strategic planning process as well. The legacy, relaunching our Legacy Society, which is our recognition for donors who have made gifts through their estate planning, will planning, that type of planned gift, as it says. So we, there was a, that had started prior to me coming to the library, and then, of course, when I came, we were very focused around the capital campaign for Silverdale. So we're looking forward to kind of bringing that back to the surface and really talking about that, especially as we also, which I don't know if it's on here, it's not on this one, but another one of our objectives is to really begin to talk about endowment for the Foundation that supports the Library into the future. So those can kind of go hand-in-hand when you're having those conversations around planned gifts, and then also that it can support an endowment, so. And then, of course, continuing to incorporate our planned giving information into regular Foundation communications. We've been trying to be consistent with that. And then grow our annual grant funding from $47,000 to $100,000, and finally, grow sponsorship funding from $32,000 to $50,000. Under stewardship, we're looking to deploy a consecutive years-giving program. So recognition that loyalty and regular annual giving is important to our library system, and it's not around, it's not, it doesn't have anything to do with the amount of the gift that you're giving, but your annual continued support is important and means something. And, and so we want to be able to recognize that type of giving as well. And then finally, relaunching our annual donor event where we celebrate and share the impact of the gifts the donors are giving to the library each year. And then, goal three, oh, it just keeps going, sorry. So focus on relationship building between the Library and the Foundation, as well as Friends. We, we really just knew that those really, both of those relationships, the Foundation Board, you know, felt both of those relationships are important and ones that we need to nurture and, and work to build. So the plans were to build Board, develop Board alignment, and then just continue with building communication channels with the Friends, and of course, maintaining strong relationships with our county government. So we have done the work of aligning the Board. So it first started off that we were doing a back-and-forth kind of liaison. Everyone was kind of tag-teaming and sharing the responsibility of going to each other's meetings. And then in 2021, we were able to move to an elected trustee that serves on both Boards, which is Eric. Thank you, Eric. And then, you know, we had these great plans. Of course, they, the Board had this, had done this work in 2019, and then in 2020, we went into pandemic. So we didn't have a lot of opportunity to nurture our relationship with the Friends of the Library. But in 2022, we relaunched in a soft way by going out to each of the Friends groups with a great gift. Jason joined us, and we went to all of the Friends and had little gifts, and just, just shared our gratitude for all that they do. And so we want to, as we go into 2023, think about, can we bring back the luncheon? Or what work can we do to just really honor and recognize the work that they're doing? And continue to think about how we work together to achieve the objectives. And then lastly, you know, we're just here to support Jason as he needs us to with his relationships with city, county, and state government officials. But he's been on that and working through that, and so that's been great. But we're, you know, we're here as a backup to that, so. Additional accomplishments in 2022. 2022 was a big year for us. So in addition to, you know, the general metrics that we had there, we also successfully completed the Silverdale Capital Campaign, which was a $5.5 million funding goal, and of course, helped with the opening of that new library. We did exceed our budgeted fundraising goal, raising $457,000. We developed and launched a sponsorship program, which has been very well-received by our business community. So that's been wonderful to see. And then we developed our endowment policies within our own policies and procedures with the Foundation to support the launch of a KRL Foundation-managed endowment program. And then, of course, we've continued with our acquisition effort, so adding 154 new donors in 2022. We also launched our very first Coffee with the Director event, which was very well-received. And in fact, after that event, we received several gifts that were wonderful. And so, thank you, Jason, for saying yes. We look forward to doing that again. And then, of course, we've had good audits, but again, continuing with an annual audit with no findings of our Foundation financials, so. Okay, we still have more, sorry. I'll make this fun. I'll try to make this fast and fun. So we've, we've been focusing on growth. This is, this is one of the charts that helps us kind of really quickly look over the course of the years. You know, are we, is the, is the work that we're doing having the impact that we want? Are we seeing the growth? And so, as I said, in 2021, you know, we really had a big year because we were, we were in the final phase of the community campaign. We launched that community campaign. We had great, amazing engagement from the community, really, really successful community phase. And in 2022, we see just a bit of a dip because we didn't get every single person to renew. But overall, we're very happy with the growth that we've had over the years. And so there's, you know, we're definitely seeing, we're working on the right things, and we're seeing progress toward those objectives, towards those goals, so. I also just kind of did, just growth over the course of 27, since 2017, we've had growth, you know, 62% growth in our donor base and 58% growth in donors giving over $1,000. So good. So good, good overall growth there. On the next slide, I think the, you know, this is, this includes the salary expense in. So we calculate, we just, this is all the numbers that we use to calculate our ROI, basically. So if you review the cost to raise a dollar over the course of the years, we're at, we average about 50%. When you look at like 2020, for example, you can see that when we're raising a lot of money in a major capital campaign, that cost to raise a dollar goes way down. That's not something you can necessarily sustain year over year over year. But when you see that we go through these phases of we're in capital campaign and then we're not, and then we're in, and so you can average it out. And, and so that's where we are, is when you average it out 50 cents, which is, is good. It does cost money to raise money, right? And then our net asset growth since 2017 is at 192%. So good growth overall there. The next slide is very fun. This is the investment that the library has made in funding the salaries of the foundation and what the foundation has provided the library in turn. So if you just go to the very bottom of the chart, we should just ignore all the rest of the numbers on there, just look at the bottom. The library has provided 2.8 million in support for the foundation and the foundation has contributed 7.8 million. So roughly 5 million that the library has netted with its investment in supporting the foundation with staffing. So so far, it's worked out well for the library. So our 2023 objectives, as I shared, developing an endowment initiative, also really supporting the fundraising planning for the Port Orchard Library. So moving, moving into feasibility and then, you know, hopefully from there into campaign for that. Also, this strategic plan that the foundation did is going to expire. So supporting the foundation board and renewing a strategic plan for the foundation for the next three to five years. And then meeting our overall fundraising goals, which is a total of 421,000 this year, which is broken down into the, to support summer learning to the library, one book, one community. And then, of course, we also need unrestricted as well. That's it. We got through it all. Thank you.
It's a good report. Do you want to speak, I mean, we, we have the good fortune, really, as with you being the foundation president. Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I, this, even though I'm president, this is the first time I got to see the annual report, so I was really excited. And if there was somebody where I could give them 50 cents and get a dollar back, I would do that several times in a row. So fantastic to see the results and how the investment in the foundation is, is coming back to KRL. One, one point I'd like to make to the board is there was a bullet point about board alignment and that there were liaisons who went back and forth. And, and then I got put into a position where I could serve both. There's, there's, there's more than enough room to continue that, that liaising. There was a, I believe it was a, it was a retreat that we had last year that Gina attended and she really enjoyed it. It was great to have that, that energy. So if anybody wants to attend any foundation board meetings or offsites, let us know. We talked about increased presence. I think that there is a disconnect between what a patron understands when they walk into a library and how much additional effort from a foundation or from the community comes into kind of creating that community feeling. So I think that, I think that that's something we'd love to continue talking about more. But I don't think you can talk about increased presence and sustained growth and continuing to diversify across nine libraries that are all very different and very different communities without asking you, do you have the resources that you need for this continued sustained growth? Because we've got, you know, the, the feasibility study coming up, your, your time is, is tight. And going back to that first slide, 2.75 people. Question for you, don't necessarily answer now, but I think it would be good to come back and make sure that this, you're getting the, we're, we're investing in you as you need to invest back into us.
Yeah. And I think that's going to be something that, that's part of the feasibility process in, as we engage with a feasibility partner to talk about our efforts for Port Orchard. One of the objectives of that feasibility study will be to do staffing analysis of the foundation and of our goals and objectives and adding that to the, you know, what, what is really the capacity of the staff. So I think we'll be able to have a really good, I mean, I could say what I think, but you know, it's, that'll be part of that, part of that feasibility as well.
Well, I'll answer four. I mean, this is one, I actually, this is really one of our mo, I mean, there's a lot of important issues, but this is clearly a big one for the board. And I think, I want to thank you, Wendy, just for the robustness of the presentation because the reality is, is we're facing a strategic plan as a board. And we sat in a community meeting just a week or so ago, and the community has lots of wants and needs and desires. And it's pretty hard to not sit in the room and not think about what our current funding constraints are because it's just so ever-present. And certainly, the work needs to start now, I think, for all of us, just to see, you know, if it takes 10 years or 20 years, I don't know, whatever it takes to, you know, try to work to amend the arc of what we're limited by in terms of our local public funding. But the one area that we have the opportunity is definitely in philanthropy. And it is a business of, it's directly related to the resources applied to it. There's no, I mean, I think this report indicates about the optimum results you can get from 2.75 staff. And moreover, the reality is, is it's phenomenal because this donor base is not big, really, it's not big. And I, it's a lot of small donors, right? So you need it all. You need the small donors, you need mid-level donors, you need major donors, you need it all. So I think for us to continue to see what can we do in an integrated way with the foundation board, but also with the Friends of the Library, because it's going to, it's going to take all of us. And I think the other thing I, I want to speak to is the uniqueness when you have an institutionally-related foundation. So many nonprofit organizations, their fund development is in-house, right? So it's seamless. And Wendy's worked in an institutionally-related foundation before with the hospital. And there's a temptation to keep them separate because they are, they're two organizations, but they're aligned. But it's not enough just to be aligned. So I am glad to see that there's acknowledgement that we're all going to do better when we can be more integrated. Because the donor, the prospective donor is in fact the patron. It's not out there buying lists, really. I mean, that helps, you've got to be doing all of that stuff. But the sooner that we can get to a place where our patrons really understand that they can make a difference, the better it's going to be for all of us because we all have big dreams for the library. So this is, you know, certainly an important issue for all of us, given the strategic planning. It's a personal passion of mine, given that I share Wendy's profession. And I'm delighted to see your tremendous success. I think one of the biggest opportunities coming down the pathway that the community is also going to mobilize around is planned giving. Because planned giving really means that every one of us has the ability to be a possibilitarian, that we can all make major gifts through, through our estates, which in the library is the perfect audience for it. So to really kind of explore that further in terms of how to take advantage in the next couple of years, given the transfer of wealth that's currently underway, and, and make, and make hay in that area. Because that will be, that'll be transformational for the library if you can harness just a tiny bit of that particularly. So, yeah. So I, this is important work and I'm delighted that I see a lot of head nodding, nodding with my colleagues that, that you agree that that's important work. Because we want the library, we want all of the staff to be supported. I mean, Eric, you asked a very important question of Wendy about what she needs, but I look down this table and I look at Lucchese and I look at Mike and I look at Shannon and, and Dan, and they all have needs in, in terms of delivering on the promise to this community. So I think this is probably one of our fundamental challenges. And I hope we can commit as trustees to stand alongside of the foundation board and, and the friends and lots of other people who support the library. So thank you, Wendy.
Yeah. And if I can add, we taught, you'd mentioned planned giving and we talked about stewardship and cultivation. Planned giving is not something that 2.75 people can do in like a turn and burn, right? These are relationships that you're developing and you need time. And it's those kinds of, it's those kind of relationships developing that provide some consistency during economic uncertainties. And that's just, I mean, that's the business that we're in. We're in the business of relationships and serving the community. So that, you know, that type of thing just takes time and we need to understand that. And, and I think also another thing that the board can do is, as, you know, two things that I've heard from, about nonprofits are they have great ideas, but not enough time and resources. And that's really the main thing I would say, great ideas, not enough time and resources. So I think one thing the board can help provide for you, aside from resources, is, is helping you focus and not trying to have 2.75 people do everything at the same time. But let's, let's focus on the most important things and figure out how we can provide you the resources for the other things we want to do.
Right. Sometimes we can't say yes to all the things.
Maybe it's a not yet.
It's a not yet, right.
Always a not yet. Not right now.
It's soon, but not today, maybe. Yeah. Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, good, thank you. Any other comments for Wendy?
I was happy to see that you're starting an endowment fund. I know it's miniscule right now, but in the long term, that can be really important. We did that at the Manchester, Friends of the Manchester Library and we can almost support ourselves if we have to, if we don't have a salmon bake or something else. So anyway, long term, I think that would be really great. I know it's hard to do, but yeah, good.
Thank you, Eric.
Just wanted to remark how amazing it was that you were able to achieve these numbers during the pandemic, right? This is 2021. So looking at those numbers like, wow, that's quite impressive. Historically, what has the trustees done to support in that capacity?
Well, one of the things I know during, so when we were launching or I don't, for, in terms of supporting the foundation, when we were doing a capital, the capital campaign for Silverdale, I know that each of the trustees at the time made a gift to support that capital campaign. So that was one of the, that was one of the pieces that we, that we engaged the trustees on. We really wanted to be able to go out to the community and say, the trustees and the foundation board for that matter, and, and library leadership as well, we're all supporting 100% support. So it wasn't necessarily a matter of, like, we asked, yes, you know, can you make a stretch gift, make this, you know, kind of hurt a little bit, but we know you care about it and it's going to feel so good when you, when you do it. But, but, you know, also that there wasn't, it wasn't a specific amount, you know, so it was really that you gave within your capacity. So that was, I know specifically in the past, that was a strategy that was very important in terms of that campaign. And going forward, of course, as we think about Port Orchard, that would be something again. And then I think to Eric's, probably to Eric's point and his question to me is as the, as the library, through its strategic planning, is defining those goals and, and understanding what the funding needs are and considering what it's going to ask the foundation to support, that there's an acknowledgement that we aren't going to be able to continue, you know, to add and add and add to our goals without, you know, of course, growing the staffing as well. It takes human resources to continue to meet those, to have growth and to meet the growing goals. So I think that would be the other piece that I would ask is that when those conversations happen, that there's an understanding, acknowledgement, supportive of that. If that's helpful.
Absolutely, thank you.
Did that answer your question?
It did.
Good. Anybody else? Great, okay.
Wendy, thank you.
Thank you.
Jason, you're up.
Thank you. I want to thank Wendy for outstanding report and really outstanding work. The foundation's doing great work, as all our leaders are. So that's a really good launching point to really talk about what our organizational goals are. We talked a little bit about foundation goals and some of them are wrapped into these goals. But organizationally, you know, first and foremost, we talked about in the Strategic and Long Range Planning Committee, report out the strategic plan is happening, the, the process of it. We're baking that now and, and the outputs from that are forthcoming, right? But the, the order of the library and the business of the library continues. So really, in 2023, what our business and our focus is, is really just securing our foundation. And, and that's not a play on words, it's not about Wendy, it's about the foundation of the library. And so how do we do that? You know, a lot of what my talk has been around strategic planning and in that our strategic plan is a long-range plan, so it's not a year-to-year plan. We really need to think critically about our future and the sustainability of the library. And that starts with the here and now. And so part of what we were building for this year really aligns and will propel us forward as a library system. Because I've said time and time again, I really didn't want to think about the library system that is going to be here after I'm gone. So I may not, you know, I'm not saying I'm not going to be here, but what happens after I'm here? A lot of, I think, the fruits of our labor, someone else might be able to enjoy because it might come along, you know, years down the line. Having said that, not to be really macabre about any of our futures and us not being here, that's a reality. I think, you know, any good, for instance, parent, you know, gets involved in will planning and estate planning for their families. And so we have to do the same. And so that's really what our organizational goals are aligned to. So, you know, it's really, you know, for me, it's about if we're going to live up to our mission, and you know what that is, in terms of, you know, dreaming more, learning more, doing more and being more for our community, like, they get that from the magic of coming to a library. We need to focus on three things. And, and the three things are spaces, you know, our people, which are really, you know, foundation, and our services. And so that's really reflected in what this is. And our facilities, you know, our spaces have to be fortified in a lot of different ways. We've got partner agreements that we need to tend to. In most of our facilities, we have building agreements, we have building partners. So it's making sure that those are all aligned and they're smart and we have good business practices. Building security, making sure we have top-notch access systems and making sure we have staff and the community protected in terms of all of our entry and exit points. So that's important. And then really evaluating some of our older facilities. And, and really, Sylvan Way is, is a property that really we will be pouring resources into. We have poured a lot of financial resources, but we need to think long-term about what is the longevity of that property and, you know, what's the feasibility of it long range? So Wendy talked about a feasibility study for Port Orchard. We also need to do a feasibility study, or really a valuation study of Sylvan Way to determine what is a long-term ability for us to be able to, to provide library services in our service center from there. And then programming, system-wide initiatives, you know, those are really the meat, right? Those are the things that people see. You know, they see summer learning, you know? Summer learning is really one of those staple programs in libraries across the nation. One book, we're going to do some rebranding around one book and some revisioning. One book, we're gonna do some rebranding around one book and some revisioning around one book this year to make it more of a community-centric piece and involve community partners in that, and we're still working through how to do that. And then to the library, which really has traditionally been centered on getting third graders, for instance, to get that spark and to sort of create lifelong library users through that process, but to the library, quite frankly, is for everyone. So we need to figure out, you know, visibility, and we've talked about that, too, is like, how do we, you know, we talked about in the foundation piece, like, how do we have awareness? We need to concentrate, too, on awareness for libraries, and so think to the library as an all-age program, and it's one that we need to consistently talk about, how do we get people to the library, either in person or virtually? And then, you know, we've poured a lot into human capital, you know, I've said this, that since day one, it's all, been all about the communication vehicle for us, and that largely has been done in a couple different ways. You know, this is one form and one vehicle to do that, in-person meetings, in-person contact with staff, having labor relations meetings have been important to be able to impart that, and then weekly messaging. And so part of that is being really transparent about what we're doing as an organization. And so that's really critical because we have to build that security from our staff to know that they're safe, to know that they are being taken care of, and know that they have a great organization to be in. So we poured a lot of resources into human resources, and we'll continue to do that. And I think the most salient thing I can say out of that is that we are concentrating heavily on staff and organizational development, so that's trainings, providing opportunities for career paths, for people to grow inside KRL, and also provide them the skill sets they need to be able to grow if they decide to leave KRL. So that's gonna be critical. We've added some staff to human resources. Lucretia's done a fantastic job of taking both DEI and human resources, and we're in the process of marrying those into one, and really being able to provide, you know, quality assets and resources for folks. And then moving along to our public services, there's a lot happening in public services. And, you know, I'm gonna stop here to say, while these are organizational goals, each of the departments that I've mentioned also have micro-goals within that and that aren't reflected here. So it's a really hard-working staff that has a lot on their plates, and so, you know, what it probably looks like for me is I'm driving them really hard to do a lot, and I am, but only because it's, for me, the end result is not what's important, it's the process and the vehicle for getting there. So, you know, what happens when we go through a process and we team up and we have goals that has a way of either bringing people together or driving them apart? This is an incredibly talented leadership team, and the most talented team I've ever been a part of. Quite frankly, we have got really talented staff that I know are capable of doing a whole lot, and so we're putting a lot organizationally on all of us, but we're all willing to dig in and help. So public services has a heavy lift, facilities has a heavy lift, human resources has a heavy lift, everybody has a really heavy lift here. And so, and I'm taking on a heavy lift to, to help anybody who needs it and to jump into the community. And so for public services, we've got student accounts that we're expanding, and South Kit Sapp has taken on student accounts. We've got, we're trying to overhaul public printing, and there may be expanded hours. We're having conversations about which hours need to be optimized for our community. And then payment system and PC upgrades will happen, both for patrons and staff, and then book locker expansion, and that's just really touching the service, touching the surface of public services. And then our communications vehicle, which is, you know, namely, our internal messaging and then our brand awareness, and then updating wayfinding so that, you know, we're accessible for people, you know, we have the proper, you know, branding so that people can know what they're looking for when they come into a library. We talked about foundation, I don't want to go into that again, but the, I think the sustainable funding strategies piece is what I really want to lift out of that. You know, and Stephanie, you've mentioned it, I think it's important, especially in this financial climate, to be able to find flexible and, you know, nimble ways to be able to fund things that traditionally aren't funded by library budgets. Most people know that, you know, you can't take a foundation budget and pay for library staff, and so, you know, when we get our money from, you know, tax revenues, right, and those are used to pay for salaries, used to pay for other things in the library, partly collections, but we can't rely on those monies to pay for staff. So with rising costs all across the board, construction costs, rising costs for salary, salary compression, 1% cap that, you know, we're attempting to lobby to have lifted now, you know, it's gonna be important to find, you know, sustainable ways to fund library programs and, and other services and, and needs by our talented library staff. And so we're really, the partnership we have between the Kit Sapp Regional Library and the Kit Sapp Regional, Regional Library Foundation is a unique one in that that foundation's baked into the library, a lot of different foundations are separate 501(c)(3)'s that even have separate facilities and aren't even a part of staff. So this is a unique relationship that we're still toying with as an organization, and still, we are still finding kernels of value in that, and, you know, Wendy's done a good job of, of telling us what that value is and the value that she's been to us, but it's neat to partner with her and figure out how we can continue to do that, you know, and we have a lot of work ahead, particularly with the Port Orchard project and figuring out how to fund that years down the line. And then, you know, records management, it's all about, from a legal standpoint, compliance, we need to make sure that we're, we're having sound legal practices in everything we do. For an organization like ours, there's lots of records that, you know, we still have from the past. Tammy's a records officer here, and so she keeps us in line in terms of figuring out what we can toss, what we can, and how to store it, and what's retrievable and by what means. So we're overhauling every, you know, facet of the library right now, and so I think that goes a long way towards saying that making sure our foundation is in order will, you know, ensure that we have a sound library that we can, you know, grow in. And, you know, Kit Sapp Regional Library has been and has a reputation of being a forward-thinking and forward-moving library system, and it's one of the many reasons why I elected to come here after, you know, gracefully, graciously being hired by this board, but we want to continue that, and so we're not resting on our laurels. This is a talented staff, and those are our goals for 2023, and I'm looking forward to having the end results of the strategic plan, and that will prepare, propel us five years down the line and even more. So that is what I want to highlight from my report, and we've got a lot of other things going on, but we'd be here another hour. But we've got talented staff, talented leadership team, and I have full faith that we're gonna have good process along the way and, and have a really good 2023. Any questions?
I think, you know, you've commented on that, Jason, and I've heard that, and I looked at your report before I got here tonight, but hearing you say it again, I think it's, given where we are and where we're going in the future, I mean, we're, there's so much, we're focusing so much on the strategic plan in some respects, being out here, if you will, you know, what's that long arc? But readying the house, you know, to just make sure, we've been through COVID, we've had a leader transition, you know, just to make sure that we focus this next year on doing everything that can be done to make sure that the library and the team is as on solid footing as possible, I think, is in itself strategic. We're often so tempted to move on to the next best thing and, you know, to prove that we're growing, but to, to get back to basics, I don't think I, you know, the first time I kind of looked at that, I didn't really appreciate the intentionality of that, and I want to applaud you for that, and also the, the leadership team and, and everybody that they supervise as well because it's not necessarily always the fun, the work to be done, but it takes tremendous commitment to get us in that position. So I, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I concur. The operations and maintenance of keeping things running, running, that's not, that's, that's not the, the, the pretty part of the job. The pretty part is launching new things, but, but I think it says a lot that, that, you know, back to basics, as Stephanie said, is, is, is based on your background and having done that, and having rolled up your sleeves and done that work as, as a staff member of, of other libraries. So appreciate that approach, and, uh, very inspiring.
Thank you.
Any other comments for Jason? Next, so thank you, Jason. Next item on our agenda is, is correspondence, and I just want to take a quick moment. We did receive a letter between last meeting and this from Kyla Garland. I just want to acknowledge that publicly because she's speaking, she spoke very thoughtfully, actually, about the present challenges as we've kind of migrated to a new setting and, and brought some things to our attention in terms of, of just general public access. And I want to let those who are listening kind of know that we're, we're aware of that and we're committed to transparency and kind of taking a, a relook at our public access. I mean, literally, I think until last meeting, the entire time I'd been on the trustees has been in an entirely virtual format, so we're making this navigation from being 100% virtual, and now we're clearly in a hybrid, in a new facility. So we are committed to going back and looking at, it will take a little bit of time because we certainly want to understand with a level of thoughtfulness, just in terms of what does this particular facility and platform offer, but flexibility if we can't be here for some reason, also look at what other libraries are doing and some other local public entities in the county as well, but we look forward to having that discussion. I know that my colleagues on the trustees are committed to transparency and public access and being open, and so we're looking forward to doing that work, and we just want people to know that we're gonna be doing that work and bringing it back to this table. Which now leads me to, in the spirit of transparency, leads me back to the bylaws. This was an initial piece of work. I think part of what's, people are going to see is, we're, we spoke to this last time, we're a relatively new group of trustees together, and we have a new leader, and we have a tremendous opportunity to really think about our own culture, particularly as we look forward to what the needs of the library are. And so, one, our first really effort in that was to kind of take a look at our bylaws. We reviewed them last month. I do want to point out, we're, we're seeking action this month on these, so this is really a second review, but I do want to point out a couple of small additional changes that were made since our last meeting that appear on the redline version that was attached to the agenda for tonight. There were three tweaks made that were not in the document last month. The first one really relates to Article Three, Section Five. We actually went in and clarified with some more detail about how, in fact, we call and go into executive session. So that addition has been made. It was not really spoken to prior in our bylaws. The other change that was made is under Article Six, Committees, Section Four, and alls we did there really is amend the language under committees. This is part of what happened when Eric noted that he was no longer on the strategic, long-range strategic planning, is in fact, the old bylaws had us changing over committee leadership in March, which makes no sense since we actually start with our officers in January, and in fact, we kind of did that by practice. And so this language aligns officer transition and committee leadership at the same time to take place in January. And then the final small change that was made is in Article Seven. Oh, I know, the writing's really small on my redline version, so what does that say? So what we did here is we realized the way that that had been written in terms of three-fifths of a quorum essentially meant that if, like, on an occasion like tonight where we're missing Gina, that three-fifths of a quorum really meant that two, two, two trustees could change the bylaws, and that didn't seem like a high enough level of threshold. And so that has been put forth as a majority so that we're in a little bit different position with that. So those are the three changes that have been made since we looked at these a month ago, and I will now open it up for questions or comments of my colleagues in terms of the bylaws, or, well, I'll just open it up, or a motion if people are good.
Well, I'm new, and so I'm coming at this new, but it's obvious a lot of thought and work went into these, and it's updating and clarification, and it's, it's really great that this was done. A lot of times, bylaws just sit there for year after year after year, and it's good that this is, you know, you're looking at them, and we're looking at them. So anyway, I would move that we adopt them as revised.
Thank you, Eric. Is there a second?
A second, yeah.
Any further comment or conversation? Hearing none, I will, I'm gonna read the motion for Eric, is to approve the final draft of revised Kit Sapp Regional Library Board of Trustees bylaws as presented. Everybody in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. That brings us to new business, and there isn't any, and swiftly moves us into housekeeping, which really is to identify the next upcoming regular meeting of the board, which is March 28th, here at the Norm Dicks Government Center. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting.